Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the special meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission, emergency meeting that is, March 24th, 2020. At this time, I would like to call this meeting to order with a roll call from our clerk, Ms. LaMagna.
Commissioner Trager?
Here.
Commissioner Delgado. Commissioner Delgado, can you hear us? I'm gonna come back around to... Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Gilliland?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Delgado?
Did you hear Tish calling?
I think I can hear him, yeah. Yeah, I can hear you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
So everyone's present.
Motion to let Commissioner Delgado confer with us by phone.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Okay. We have reported the state of the city for COVID-19 response from Drew Driscoll, deputy city manager, fire chief.
Thank you. I traditionally don't speak by written comments, so bear with me, please. The following is a chronological highlight of some of the progressive efforts the city of Daytona Beach has undertaken to ensure the health and wellness of our employees, the community we serve, and the preservation of essential city services. On March 4th, employee guidance was released to precaution all of our employees with following CDC guidance for healthy workplace. Public Works installed hand sanitizer stations throughout city facilities. That same evening, I offered you an update of the city's progress dealing with COVID-19. Additionally, CDC guidance posters have been installed at various city facilities. On March 5th, the city launched a COVID-19-specific webpage to offer members of our community direct links to credible guidance from the CDC and the Florida Department of Health. On March 13th, the city of Daytona Beach was the first municipality in Volusia County to declare a local state of emergency. This progressive action authorized under the mayor's leadership and ratified by this commission continues to allow for the expedient and proactive actions necessary for the preservation of our community during this difficult pandemic. Along with our local state of emergency, by declaration, the mayor canceled or postponed all city permitted activities on both public and private property, which included the mass gatherings of persons. As we recall, this proactive action, this proactive and necessary action was conducted during Bike Week and shortly before several community events were scheduled to take place. On March 16th, city hall, public, city parks, and public facilities were placed on a limited or closed access status to reduce the congregating of visitors following CDC guidelines. Telephone contact information has been posted at all city locations for the convenience of our visitors. On March 20th, the city manager sent communication to all employees relaxing the city's leave policy to further encourage workers not feeling well to stay at home. Also on March 20th, the city closed all parks and community centers and all leisure service activities were suspended. On March 23rd, the city became the first municipality in Volusia County to begin employee health screening program, which follows enhanced CDC guidelines and meeting ADA compliance. This activity's intent is to provide for a healthy work environment while at the same time providing for sick employees the appropriate amount of time to stay at home and properly recover. Also yesterday, guidance was sent to all employees regarding the city's workforce preservation plan, which began today. Again, the city was the first municipality in Volusia County to implement such a large-scale plan. This plan is to assure the long-term continuation of city services while providing for both physical and financial health of our city employees. All city facilities and parks have been closed to public access and posted as such. Our city staff continues to provide for the needs of our citizens utilizing onsite response personnel and our telecommunion workforce. Implementation of this plan authorized 80 hours of administrative leave time for city employees, including our part-time, seasonal, and casual workers who will receive a prorated benefit. During this time of restricted access, we encourage all residents to contact city staff by telephone or email. Further contact information may be found at the city's website, www.codb.us. This evening, one of the actions which has been drafted for your approval constitutes an initial phase of the city's economic success and recovery plan, which provides a means to assist our residents and the business community during these challenging times. As proposed, all water, sewer, and residential recycling payments for March, which is to be billed in April, will be covered by the city's emergency reserve fund as proposed. This progressive assistance to our community keeps the money in the pockets of our citizens and the business to assist them in providing for their families. Every utility customer will still receive an April bill. However, this bill will reflect the city's contribution, only requiring the customer to pay their stormwater and solid waste portion of their bill. This effort by the city offers a $4 million stimulus to our citizens. Additionally, this evening, with your approval, the city will move forward with the economic sustainability and prosperity portion of the city's initiative. This action allows, will allow, all construction-related permits issued for the next 90 days to be abated by the city. To ensure the desired result of a continuation of our recent growth and renewal, the permitted activity must commence with physical construction within 180 days after the permit is issued for larger-scale projects. We must foster our recent growth and renewal so that the city does not lose the positive momentum of providing for an improved and prosperous community for all. Lastly, we are requesting authorization for the city manager to waive lease rental payments at city commercial facilities for up to 90 days. In closing, all city staff continues to work tirelessly at the city manager's direction to assist our community through these unprecedented and challenging times. All of the city's proactive efforts would not be possible if not for the leadership of our mayor and city commission ensuring the health and financial integrity of our great city. City staff remains in constant communication with local, state, and federal partners to ensure we have the most current information and support. The communications division will continue to release important information for our citizens via the city website, social media, and radio. Financial assistance for small businesses and individuals in our community continues to become available each day by state and federal resources. Please follow us and view us on social media for continued information. In my opinion, together as a community, I'm confident that we'll persevere and continue forward for a greater day in the city of Daytona Beach.
Thank you. Thank you for that very thorough and excellent report. I wanna, for our manager comes on, I wanna say how hard you guys have been working throughout this crisis, both the leadership team as well as the staff. And I wanna thank the manager and the staff for responding to the challenge that this commission laid last week. And it commenced really as it relates to our utility bills from the very first resolution, emergency resolution, when we waived the, we didn't waive the fees, but we agreed not to disconnect any of our utility services during that time. That was our way of showing our residents that we were committed to doing what we could during this time. Following that, in meeting with the manager and discussing with him, and during this commission meeting, last meeting, I followed up with a subsequent meeting with the manager and challenged him to come up with something that we thought would really work for our residents, and something that would serve as a stimulus to say that we, the city of Daytona Beach, are committed to their well-being. We all are aware of the national effort to provide residents, as well as business leaders and community members, citizens, with a stimulus. Well, we're just a city. But I think that what we have before us tonight is quite a Herculean effort on the part of our city to show the residents of Daytona Beach that during this unforeseen and never-beforeseen challenge, that we are with you. And so, at this time, I would be happy if our manager would go ahead and properly illustrate how he has met this challenge on our behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you're 100% accurate. You know, we're moving forward to look out for our community. What we put together was Daytona Beach Care Program, and the whole idea is to find a way that we can provide assistance to our residents, as well as the businesses, so that we've got a stimulus to help them through the times that they, when they are most needed. So I'm just briefly read a statement here. COVID-19, the pandemic qualifies as a federal, state, and local emergency, and as such, I'm recommending a multi-pronged approach to providing immediate financial relief to Daytona residents and business owners. The value of this incentive package is about 5.65 million. The method of financial assistance will be fund, will be, to fund the significant portion of the utility bill next month using $4 million from our general fund emergency reserves. The amount will be automatically adjusted or credited to the customer's next bill. Specifically, a credit will be shown for the amount of water, sewer, recycling, and public service tax. Not to include in the credit will be fees associated with stormwater, solid waste, and landfill. The next incentive will be a suspended fees for billing permits for the next 90 days. This does not include impact fees and doesn't waive the need to apply for a permit. All residential and commercial projects will be included from permits from fences, roofs, swimming pools, construction of homes, and commercial spaces. The next provision would be to waive commercial tenants' rent at city-owned facilities such as Joe's Crab Shack, Daytona Beach Pier, Jackie Robinson Ballpark, and golf clubs, restaurant tenants, and the Marina Plaza for up to 90 days. And what, what I wanna do with that last item is really evaluate the businesses that we have and make an appropriate adjustment with those businesses. So that's what we're recommending that we enact today with our other delegation and approval of authority granted to both the mayor and the city manager, so that we can continue to move forward in meeting needs of the community through our actions.
Questions, comments? I hope you all would agree that this is sort of, I think, a Herculean effort on our part, and definitely a commitment, but one that our residents are well worth.
So Jim, the money that's gonna come out of the general fund emergency reserve, how does that, maybe this is a question, how does that leave us, you know, you got hurricanes coming this, this fall?
We still will have, you'll still have about, in that particular fund, you'll have about $4.2 million left in that fund. In addition to that, we'll have another about $10 million in reserves that are available that's gonna be adjusted.
Those are the, I forgot the term, not unassigned, they're not, they're not dedicated towards?
No, they're not dedicated, anything yet.
Okay. I think Aaron had a question.
Commissioner Delgado?
I still have about, in that particular fund, that's about $4.2 million left in that fund.
It's a repeat of what he just said.
I have another about $10 million in reserves.
I'm gonna say a delay.
That's a delay.
Cause he's watching.
That's a 10-minute delay.
Yeah, I think I'm on a delay. I don't know, I'm not able to hear in real time, so I'm watching you guys on the TV, and I don't have really sound coming through, so I think I'm on a delay.
Is there a reason that we moved him from up here? Last week was better. It was phone-only.
I don't know if you guys can hear me at all.
Yes, we can hear you. But you're on a delay.
Yeah, 60 seconds.
And you can't text him and tell him.
Ask your question. I'm gonna text him now.
Can we get the phone set up here? The conference phone?
Yeah, I think it's better with the phone set up.
In your package?
Yeah.
There is an example of the bill and how it will look whenever they, when they get their bill this month.
I had sent some questions to the manager that I was gonna ask this evening, and actually they all pretty much got answered in, in the report. I do think we need to be a little cautious when we look at the tenants that we have, because there are certain, they're all a little different. Like, honestly, the Bridge Club, they should not be meeting. You know, I don't have a problem waiving their fees, but we should probably close that facility for right now, based on the demographics of the people who utilize it. An organization like a Joe's Crab Shack probably has business interruption insurance. I'm sure they have laid off workers. You know, their need would be significantly less than, you know, the zipline guys who are in a park that's closed, so they, they are closed. I know the, I was at the golf course over the weekend, and, you know, they're down to a small percentage of the revenue at the restaurant that they normally would get, so I know they're in pretty dire straits right now. But they're all a little different. You know, the motorboat club, the folks that are in the Marina Plaza, you know, they're, I think they, I agree with you, Jim, that I think that they, they need to be sort of individually evaluated for need and, you know, come up with some sort of metric for figuring out whether or not they, they sort of qualify.
Right, that's, that was my intent. I just wanted the authority to do it, the flexibility, and then...
No, I think it's a great idea.
Then we'll do that. All of these are included in the, I believe they're included in that resolution, where's it being at?
That's correct.
Ben, all those items are included in the resolution?
They are.
They are, okay.
Okay, hold it. Are you there? Can you hear?
Yeah, I can hear you guys.
Now, we're in real time now, okay?
Fantastic.
Okay.
Thank you. I had a question about the proposal.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I think we need a microphone on that.
Is there any kind of, are we thinking about doing any kind of, if we go that route, are we thinking about doing any kind of caveat where they need to, you know, keep their doors, keep employment at a certain capacity, or keep a certain number of their employees in order to be eligible for that kind of compensation, or dispensation, rather?
We don't have any conditions on that at this point, but it's, this was a, an attempt to keep their business, you know, financially sound from the standpoint of the utilities that they use for that purpose. But we did not have any caveats as it dealt with those businesses otherwise. And if we have a business that has closed and is no longer in business, then we'll have to take a look at that in those cases, and they may be treated somewhat different, because they may be a different impact.
Okay. And then as far as the water and the utility benefits, we were talking about doing that for a one-month period at about $4 million?
That's correct.
I mean, one thought I have, I don't know if now is the appropriate time to talk about this now, is that, you know, there may be people who will choose to pay to lessen the burden on others, you know, so, you know, I don't know if we can assess the impact on whether or not, if, you know, some people voluntarily pay, we can extend this longer for people who are harder hit. I think that, you know, we could, if we made it kind of an optional thing, I think we might be surprised by the number of people who would still pay some or all of their bill to help the people that are less fortunate. One month is great. You know, obviously, we're in the very early stages of seeing what the total financial picture is gonna be, and I don't think anyone really knows. But, you know, I think one option would be to at least, you know, make payment optional in that first month and see, you know, if there's any data that shows that we can extend this program for other people who are harder hit financially. Or maybe talk about doing more time for people who are let go from their jobs, or who are in jobs that are affected by the shutdowns. For example, restaurant workers, people who work in gyms, any place that's affected by a mandatory shutdown. I think that we should make sure those people receive, you know, the absolute most the city can do to help any of our residents. Not that every resident doesn't deserve, you know, a help, but I think we'd all agree that people who are in industries that have been shut down are gonna struggle, you know, far more so than someone who still has their job for the time being, or is not shut down. So, you know, that's something else I kind of thought we might wanna talk about when we talk about that kind of assistance program. So that's, I don't know if now's the time to talk about that, but I did wanna add that. And I have some other thoughts, but I'll save that for later in the discussion. But those were the two items I wanted to bring out as far as what we've talked about so far, was the, you know, trying to post, trying to extend the help to the residents by allowing some, you know, people who wanna pay to pay, and talking about, you know, treating people who are, you know, forced layoffs differently.
And Aaron, how do you propose we identify?
I'm sorry?
How do you propose we identify?
I mean, I would, I would imagine that people could turn, are you talking about people who have been laid off or unemployed by, like, a restaurant or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, somehow, I mean, you're talking about us developing a means test for us to determine, you know, an eligibility for a program that we would fund, and, you know, we...
No, I was just saying, like, if you, if you work for a restaurant, and you're not able to go into work, and you're a city, and you live in the city, try to make sure that, you know, those, that if we're gonna waive electric, or, I'm sorry, water bills for people into a second month, looking at a way of saying, hey, if you can present, you know, if you show a pay slip from a company that's closed down or something like that to the city, then, then we would look at people, reducing those people's bills going into a second month.
So if they, I mean, obviously, the business closes, there won't be a pay stub, because they didn't get paid. But you could, if someone had their hours reduced, you would be able to demonstrate sort of a, this is what it looked like in February, this is what it looked like in March.
I'm having a really hard time hearing you, Rob.
What's that?
I couldn't hear what you were saying. You said, what was wrong with the pay stub?
Is it, is it, so, so if you, it's on. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. The, so, so, all right, that's one, I mean, we're gonna have to put a team together of people to evaluate these, because we have, what, 30-something thousand water meters in the city? So if we got 25,000 that don't pay, and 28 that do, or whatever it is, we gotta evaluate 28, 25,000 requests for a continued credit into the following month. I mean, the numbers, I think, will be significant because of the demographics of our city. But we need to have some sort of mechanism to do that. And I just wanna make sure we kind of think that through, because it's, I mean, honestly, I, I'm, you know, knock on wood, the, I'm still working, you know, if I get the bill, I'll be happy to pay my full bill when I get it. You know, that can go back into the reserve for, you know, additional assistance in the following month. I think you'll find there's a lot of people that will do that. And I think we probably need to include a little note with the water bill to say that that's where we're gonna go, that that's what we're, what it's gonna look like. But, but we need to have some mechanism for determining who will get assistance in that, on that next bill, because it certainly won't last to a third bill.
Let's, let's start out with, with the plan of an option to pay, because I think that's fair and that's reasonable. And then let's think about how we might want to extend beyond that to those that have the greatest need, but you're certainly right. One of the reasons that we needed to make it universal was that it's, it's impossible for us to really determine who can or cannot pay their water bill. And I think the honor system would be the best way to just leave it at that. I don't even know if we could, like you say, plan to assess that many people or to process that many requests. But if someone can think of a brilliant way of doing that between now and the next bill, that's fine. But for now, is it possible for us to still accept the payments from those that want to pay? And then we'll see how much comes in, and then, even if we had to do a prorate for the next bill, we take that amount and begin prorating people's bill by that amount. Say, we take in $8 million, and then we get, we receive $2 million, we just continue to pay that back into the water bill, so that we'll give people...
That's a great idea.
I think that's a better, I think that's a, an approach that we can take and implement. When, when you get to trying to make a judgment on, you know, who's working, who isn't, that's a little more difficult for all of us to do. We may have to look at some other source of assisting rather than this method.
But we're not doing, we're not shutting off water bills, right?
We are not shutting off water bills.
Well, I mean, not water bills, we're not shutting off water bills.
We're not shutting off anybody's utilities.
Gotcha.
I think Rob has a good point here as far as, you know, making sure if we do something like that, and residents that do pay and do wanna pay, because I do believe that there are people that will pay, that just in the water bill, something simple like if you'd like to pay it forward type notice, a little note that if you'd like to pay it forward, you may pay your next month's bill, and you can pay it forward, kind of a pay it forward type.
I would go forward a little bit further than that and encourage that, because I, it's like you say, if you're working and you are making the same amount of money you were making before, you, you know, and I'm not trying to pass judgment on anybody, we know our water bill's not the cheapest bill in people's account. But nonetheless, this is something that all of us need to pay our part in, so that those that are most vulnerable and suffering the most, as you were saying, I think, will suffer less.
Or even if they just wanna, if some will only pay half, let's say you take half and you wanna pay half forward. I'd like to see something like that, because I think every $50, $25, $75 adds up, and it helps.
Many meters as we have out there, it adds up quick.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So is it possible, is it possible to put on the website or on the bill an option just to pay, you know, pay your bill, pay some amount, and then a place to put an extra contribution or something? Do we have, is that too hard to do?
Is there an option on the bill? Not currently, but it's something we would have to look at, and there may be a way to do it, and we're certainly gonna try to achieve that.
Or just anything above the, you know, if anyone puts, if your bill's 100 bucks and you put 150, just put a disclaimer that says the extra will be applied towards other people's bills or something like that?
Yeah, they'll have to...
I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah, they would have to authorize it in their, in the bill. We'll have to figure out how we can put that on there.
Or if the bill is 100, and they decide they pay 50, they'll pay 50, but they want the other 50 to go pay it forward in some type of way.
Yeah.
Is that, that would be an option as well, right?
We're gonna, we're gonna try to do that. Now, we're, we're short on time as far as we're trying to get bills out, you know, the third of the month, so we're pushing, but we're gonna try to get that done.
Okay.
No, no, I think what's being said...
I don't understand Commissioner Henry's point on that.
No, yeah, let me say, what's being said, Commissioner Henry, is that if a person pays their bill, the whole amount would then go into this pot.
Right.
Now, if they paid half their bill, then that half would go into the pot.
Right, that's the question.
So this bill should have been $178. So if this were my bill, and I paid $178, then $147 would go into the fund that would help offset bills for the following month.
Correct.
I don't know if we wanna get into, what if I paid $200? I don't think we wanna get into that overage part of it, because...
I was just thinking, not getting into the overage, but they decided to only pay half of their bill, the other half would go into the overage.
Yeah, whatever they pay will go into the overage.
So if this person had paid $100 out of their $178, when they only needed to pay $32, then they would have the other 78 go into the pot.
Anything, anything over $31.99 would go forward.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
And then, and then, just to keep it simple, we apply that to everybody who took advantage of the whole surplus in month one, gets a proportion of that in month two.
True, yeah. Everybody.
What were you saying? Commissioner Gilliland, were you saying you didn't want, you didn't want people to be able to pay a whole lot extra? I didn't understand that part of it.
If we start collecting extra, we're gonna, it's gonna turn into a big mess, because some people overpay their water bills and tension.
Right.
You know, and so we're not gonna know, it's gonna take sort of like, you know, a statement from each meter, you know, account owner as to what happens with that extra money if they pay it. I want it applied to a future bill, or, you know, I want it going into the fund to help offset costs for, you know, for folks next month.
Right.
And that's gonna get to be an administrative nightmare.
Well, it's gonna have to show up, we'll have to figure out how we're gonna do that, but, you know, let's see how this month goes.
Okay.
And then we'll, we can, we're gonna have another meeting as we get into the latter part of the month, looking at next month, and we'll take a look at it.
We're gonna have another meeting next week, right?
Well, there's a provision in this, in the resolution that allows us to go like four, what is it? Been four meetings?
Up to four periods of seven days, and extended local declaration.
-and extended local declaration.
So four periods of seven days?
However, if one commissioner wants to have a meeting and talk about the issues, then we would go ahead and have the meeting at that request.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, we don't need to wait that, we don't, I don't, I don't wanna wait that long, 'cause too much, this is too fluid. And we'll get to that point of, of the, that's in the declaration, but it's, the more I've thought about it, it's too fluid of a situation, too many things change too rapidly without us, you know, being able to weigh in on it. Okay. Commissioner Delgado, did you have further questions on that part of the resolution?
Uh, no, just the comment I made earlier about the, the businesses and the rental assistance, I think that was the only comment I had about the, the point so far. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anyone else to comment on this particular part of the item that the managers were per view? Okay. All right.
So we're gonna move on to item number four, which is the actual resolution that's extending.
Okay.
And I'll read that into the record. It's a resolution extending a state of local emergency for an additional seven-day period ending March thirty-first, 2020, authorizing the mayor to extend the state of local emergency for up to four additional seven-day increments subject to conditions, invoking authority allowed by section two fifty-two point three-eight Florida statute to waive procedures and formalities required of the city, authorizing the city manager to approve contracts, contract amendments, and contract change orders subject to conditions, approving the following measures in order to provide local economic stimulus for the benefit of the city residents and businesses, payment by the city of a portion of the city utility customers' bill for March 2020, utility billing period, waiving or deferring certain building permit fees, and authorizing the city manager to waive or defer rent owed by, owed by city commercial tenants subject to conditions, providing a procedure for city commission reconsideration of the authority granted herein, and providing when this resolution shall take effect.
So moved.
I think that was May.
Second.
All right, we got a second from Commissioner May, first from Comilla, Commissioner Gilliland. Uh, thank you, sir.
And I, did I have any members of the public that wanted to speak on this item? I have no members.
No, no speakers. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments or questions? All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Aye, okay. Uh, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Move on to item number five, which is the Human Resource Department Risk Management Division Brown and Brown Excess Workers Compensation and Liability Insurance Renewals, it's a resolution. A resolution accepting the proposal submitted by Brown and Brown of Florida, Inc., on behalf of Arch Insurance Company for excess workers' compensation coverage, and Illinois Union Insurance Company for excess liability coverage, for a period from April fifteenth, 2020 to April fifteenth, 2021, authorizing payment of premiums and fees due in the amount of four hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars, and providing when this shall take effect.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, uh, Commissioner Reed, and a second from Commissioner Gilliland.
Do I have any members of the public that would like to speak on this item?
No speakers.
I have no speakers.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number six, which is the Risk Management Division Brown and Brown Health Dental and Concilary Insurance Coverage Renewals. This is a resolution accepting the proposal for Florida healthcare plans to provide medical insurance, including pharmacy coverage, to city employees, retirees, and their dependents, accepting the proposal of Standard Insurance Company to provide dental coverage for employees, retirees, and their dependents, accepting the proposal of usable formerly Florida combined life to provide life, accidental death, and dismemberment and disability insurance for employees, authorizing the city to pay a portion of the premiums for employees, couples, and families, and to collect the balance of premiums for payment to the appropriate insurer and a health savings account where applicable, effective May first, 2020, authorizing the city manager, city clerk, and the chief financial officer to execute any documents necessary to implement this resolution and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict on this item, and my conflict is that I am employed by Florida healthcare plans, whose staff is recommending to continue for health insurance.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Um, before, do we have any speakers on this item? I have no speakers.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Uh, is that it?
Final.
My final item? Okay. All right, um, we will go ahead and have our commission comments. I'm sure that there are some things that this commission would like to perhaps add to what we have discussed. I purposefully left out, uh, some of the other items that I would like for us to discuss tonight as it relates to things that we can do, certainly working lock, hand in hand with our manager for what we've put on the agenda and, and was obviously in total agreement with that. But I would like to now open the floor up and I'll commence. We'll just do it as our regularly, the way we do it, and I think Commissioner Traeger would be first.
Well, I'm very distressed about our economic situation due to the virus, but I am very glad that the city is trying to address. And I'm also very upset of having to stay home, I'm having cabin fever. I do not like this way of a stay vacation, believe me. Anyhow, I think we, we boldly did the right thing, and I think to continue it is right because it's not quite two weeks since spike week, and they say up to fourteen days, and it's definitely not fourteen days since spring breakers. And now I've heard that the governor has put into effect that anybody coming from New York, which is now the hotspot, has to more or less self-impose isolation for about two weeks after coming here. I think everything we can do to keep our residents safe is what we need to do. And we might not like it, but it's like, they say, tearing off a bandage. Sometimes it's easier to do it all at once rather than inch by inch by inch. And I would rather we take drastic measures now and get this over with quickly than have it extend for what they're talking about eighteen months, which is totally, totally, totally wrong, I hope, but I think we did the right thing.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
Um.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Delgado.
This conference will now be recorded.
You, you, uh-
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you. I join the other commissioners in saying that I, I think that we probably do need to do, continue to do the difficult things now so that we can bring this to an abrupt close, or as abrupt a close as possible. I mean, this is an unprecedented challenge that we're facing, not just in, you know, our physical health, but also in our financial health and in our emotional health. I mean, it's a, it's a terrifying proposition to have the uncertainty that we have, and that's why I think it's so important for there to be strong leadership. So I commend, I commend the leaders that have been strong and have been brave, and I think that, you know, one thing that I wanted to see what the commission had thought about is, you know, passing a resolution or drafting some sort of resolution, setting forth the City of Daytona Beach government's, you know, thoughts or policy requests to the county and to the Florida governor about steps that we would recommend if we can come up with something that we all agree on, that he take, or that the county take to protect Florida as a whole. I think, you know, very good points made last meeting about, you know, we're not a walled city fortress, so, you know, we can't stop people from coming and going and moving from, so, you know, if Daytona does something, but we don't have the support of the fellow, of our fellow citizens in Ormond and Holly Hill and Port Orange, it doesn't, doesn't do a whole lot of good. So I think it's important that we have a unity at a county level and at a, you know, a statewide level. So, you know, I think that's something that I, I would like us doing, and it's just a policy declaration, if we can kind of agree on something to sign and say, hey, this is the values that the City of Daytona thinks should be done on a county and statewide level, whether that's closures or not closures, I tend to think closures, things like that, I think that would be important to do. You know, I talked with the manager about, some of my constituents have had difficulty getting good information because they're not necessarily on the internet, and the internet is not always a source of good, reliable information. I think it's very important to have accurate, reliable information and not fear mongering, not propaganda, and not, you know, false hope or, or dire predictions. So right now, there's all kinds of misinformation out there, some of it intentional, some of it unintentional, you know, and you can see that in people's reactions, whether they're hoarding goods and, you know, toilet paper, or, you know, certain medicines that they think may provide some benefit that are untested or untried. So I wanna make sure that we, as a ci, as a city, are giving good information to our citizens and making that available. We talked last time about the role of the city's website in doing that, but also our TV channel, and if we have radio access, I think that's, or newsletters, all three of those things. I'd like to make sure that we're putting out good information to our citizens in a way that they all can get it regardless of whether they're internet savvy or not, and I don't know what options we have. I know we have a TV channel, TV show. I don't know if there's some stuff that we can do there to make sure that people have access to information, not only about, you know, how they can stay healthy, but just services the government's having. There's a lot of misinformation about what benefits may be available or what federal relief may be coming. So having a central clearinghouse that's available on TV, radio, and the internet, I think is a very good thing we could offer our citizenry, and I think it's something that we should offer them. I don't think that we should just hope that everyone can be on the internet or, you know, get information that way. I talked with the manager about this briefly too, but, you know, looking for a silver lining, if we, with all this shutdown, if we could get construction going on Beach Street and the widening of Beach Street, we might be able to get through that without, you know, impacting the economy even more. I mean, one thing that I'm worried about is, as we come through this, then we get hit with a hurricane or something else happens down the road. You know, we don't need that one-two punch. So if there's anything, nice picture, if there's anything we can do to push through the construction projects that we have that would otherwise slow down business like on Beach Street, I don't know what options we have for that, but I would, I'd like to see if there's anything we can do, even if that comes at a slight premium. I know Commissioner Gilliland, don't get upset, I'm not talking about a lot of money, but if, if there's anything we can do to, to get that, that construction project going forward now and try to get it done while we can, I think that would be a great relief to the Beach Street merchants who must be absolutely devastated by what's going on right now. And then, we already talked about the, the water and the, you know, helping the citi, helping the city. I mean, I, you know, the economic consequences of this are just gonna be, you know, very difficult for us to assess right now, but I think they're gonna be far lasting, and I think, you know, we, we're gonna need federal assistance for sure. It's, uh, doesn't seem like, you know, I think we're doing everything that we can do, we just don't, there's not that much that we can do as a city as far as, you know, places that we can give citizens breaks on bills and things like that. But, you know, if we're gonna help out companies that rent from us and things like that, I do wanna make sure that, you know, we, if they're staying open to keep employed local citizens, and that, that's great, that's what we wanna try to do. And, you know, I'm encouraging everyone to, you know, try to spend money in the local economy, do whatever they can to help things going. And then lastly, I wanted to thank our first responders and, and not just our police and our firefighters that work for the city, but all the nurses, doctors, healthcare professionals, everyone who's putting themselves in harm's way to treat people, to help people. I mean, hospitals are open, clinics are open, things like that, and those people are operating with just as much, you know, risk as any of us, in fact, more so, and they have no magic protection, they have no silver bullet that they get. So, you know, not just the firefighters and police officers who protect us, but also the nurses and doctors and everyone in the healthcare industry and everyone who's working out there to help us get through this. I do, I wanna thank them, and I wanna make sure that they're not forgotten, as they really are doing some heroic things for us right now. And I can't imagine how frightening it would be to, to be in the healthcare field right now, going into work each day, not knowing, you know, what you're gonna face. If anyone does get sick that works with the city, I wanna make sure that we have an absolute commitment to take care of them and make sure that their paychecks aren't adversely affected by this. I think that's an important part of being responsible, is if you are sick, stay home. And for a lot of people that have to make that decision about, you know, their paycheck and in this time of financial uncertainty, they don't wanna miss even a day of paid work. But, you know, for our first responders and for our city staff, I wanna make sure that we're sending out a good, clear message to be safe, protect yourself, don't come to work sick, but also that the city's gonna take care of them financially in every way possible. So tho, those are values that I have. I don't know, and I'm sure we all share that same sentiment, how we affect that, I'm, I'm not exactly sure, and I think it will depend on each and every agency or department within the city. But I, I did wanna mention that, something that I'm, I'm aware of, I know some of my constituents have been concerned about that, some of the first responders I've spoken to have been concerned about that, how they'll be treated if they have to use sick time, things like that. So that's something I'd like us to discuss at some point, obviously, it doesn't have to be done right now, 'cause I don't think that anyone's at that point yet. But those are some of the things that have been on my mind, and I'd like, if anyone has any reaction to that or any ideas, those are the things that I've been thinking about. So that's, that's where I am for this evening, and I don't know if anyone has any thoughts or reaction to any of those, those comments.
Did you have any specific items that you wanted to consider when you alluded to closures or anything, or sending, because when you talk about sending something to the county or the state, you know, most things we have purview over for, as a city. So there are only a few things that we would have to lobby them on.
Beaches?
Beaches? Um, so are, are you suggesting that we send a resolution to the county suggesting that they close the beaches?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there any one-
I think, I think we should. I think, my personal, my personal opinion is that we should go ahead and, you know, bite the bullet and operate, you know, close down as many things as we have to right now to, you know, stop the spread of the disease, to flatten the curve, squash it flat, and, you know, get through this as quickly as we can, rather than, as Commissioner Traeger alluded to, you know, facing this battle for eighteen months. I mean, we just, we, no one can afford that, no one has the endurance to survive eighteen months of this, I don't think. Certainly financially, we can't do that. So, you know, I think we might have to be brave and, and do some things that are unpopular, some things that are harsh now so that we can get through this and move on. And as far as sacrifices that other generations have made, you know, I think back to, well, I don't think back to, I just, I know what I've read about history and, you know, world wars or Great Depression, people have made far greater sacrifices for far longer than, than what we're talking about here. So that's one of the things I think we should do, is shut down any place where people can congregate in large numbers, because unfortunately, it doesn't look like everyone is taking this as seriously as I think they need to.
Well, I think everybody knows, I've, for weeks, wanted the beach closed, and I continue to want that, and I do agree that there are other items that I think we need to address, closures, but I guess the beach is certainly one that we don't control, but if we wanna send a resolution, it would take all of us to be, or at least a majority of us to be in agreement with that. So would hear from others if there's a-
I would be in agreement.
Okay.
I would like to know what it means specifically to close the beach. What does that mean? Not just the ramp, does it mean no access to the beach, not walking to the beach, not being on the beach, is that what it means?
That's what it means.
Complete closure?
You, you step on the beach, you're trespassing.
And how do we-
Actually, you're violating the order, which is, what, a criminal offense, Bob, right?[1746.11]
Obviously, this would be the county's purview since they have their restrictions on the beach, so it depends on how they enforce it.
Would we be enforcing it, or would they be enforcing it?
They would.
It would be the county.
And they would have to agree. We, we're just talking about a resolution, but that's what it looks like it means, you're not supposed to be on the beach. Does it mean that no one's going to go on the beach? Probably not. But what it does mean, and most importantly to me, is that people will not come to Daytona Beach to go on the beach, and that's what I want. I don't want anyone coming to Daytona Beach to go on the beach, stay at home.
All right. I'm in agreement with that, but I have to say something. Last week, we discussed the idea, and again, it goes along with what, with what Commissioner Delgado was saying. Last week, we discussed what happens if Daytona Beach acts and the other cities around us don't, and so I'm curious, have we, have we been able to meet with the other mayors? And what has their reaction been?
Well, the reaction was, it was a discussion. We met by phone and had a discussion on this. There were very few, there were, the only mayor in favor of closing the beach at the time was New Smyrna's mayor, and I think the day after that, it was Ponce Inlet's mayor. And so, and we, that, but that was it. There, there were no other issues. We discussed other items, but, and they, they respected the fact that we didn't want to do things that might adversely affect them or adversely affect us, they did respect that. But they also understood that we all have our own municipalities, so if you have things that you want to take back to them for a discussion, we will have a mayor's conference call on Thursday morning, I think, at 9:30, or Thursday morning, and I will participate in that conference call to discuss things that you guys might think that we should take back to discuss with them. But as it relates to the beach, there wasn't going to be uniformity on that position, so, yeah.
All right, so, in a, in an effort to dissuade more people from entering Florida at this time and coming your far beaches, I would be in favor of that.
Okay.
I would definitely be in favor of it.
So, what I, what's the, the closest city to us? Is it still just New Smyrna that's closing their beach, or they just...
They don't close it. They don't, they, they didn't, no, they don't control it, the county.
Right, I got that part. So, they just rep access, that's what they did.
But it was rep access for us also. They only closed it one day earlier for New Smyrna as a trial.
And so, we're saying no walking, no, no anything on the beach, is that what...
Saying is to close the beaches, and we would leave the county to determine how they would enforce that, but it simply means you're not supposed to be on the beach. Whether they're going to arrest people, I doubt that they would arrest anyone for being on the beach, but people wouldn't come to Daytona Beach to be on the beach.
I would be in favor of that.
Okay. Commissioner?
So, Ruth, you had mentioned earlier, the governor's order, it actually is New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut, all three of them.
Right, Connecticut.
If you come to, to Florida, you have to self-quarantine for 14 days. So, we're starting to see travel restrictions, because the, the way these things play out are, that goes hand in hand with the shelter in place orders. So, I think we're starting to see, it would not surprise me at all if the governor came out with an order for Miami-Dade and Broward counties, and possibly Palm Beach County as well, more than half the cases in the state are in those three counties, and they're growing at a alarming rate. It's hard to judge right now because the, there's a significant backlog of tests where the sample was collected, but yet the test has not been, been resulted yet. You have to look at the date of the test, and then you have to look at the date of the restrictions that have been put into place. You know, we did, the governor did, you know, bars last Tuesday, Friday he did restaurants, fitness centers, gyms, the, you know, this airfare, this people traveling from New York, New Jersey, Connecticut was yesterday, you know, so you got to, you, you literally have to wait about a week or two after the restriction goes into place to see whether they've accomplished anything. Problem is, we don't have that much time to wait. So, you know, on, on the beach issue, I honestly, I'm going to have to say I don't have an opinion, because I don't know what's going on over there. Certainly during the spring break situation, there was, there was trouble, you know, they, they were not staying in groups of 10, they were not keeping six feet from other groups, you know, and, and action needed to be taken. But after that, I honest, I, I think there was something in the news journal about the beaches being kind of sparklessly populated, but I, I didn't, I didn't read the article, but...
I can speak to it. I've been there, I've gone to drive by there almost every day, I've been on the beach to take a look at what is going on in Zone 3, and it's becoming less and less and less. I've been there early morning, I've been there mid-afternoon, early evening, just to check on it, and it's becoming fewer and fewer people. So, automatically, it's already with the tourists, perhaps not staying at the hotels, we're leaving, spring breakers, and the age demographic I'm seeing in the morning times, early morning, mid, and evening, it's not young people. It's, they look like residents. They look like people, maybe their kids are here now, daughters, sons, and they're walking with their parent. So, that's kind of what it looks like, as opposed to seeing clusters of families and kids and picnicking for the whole day, it's not looking like that right now. And the stretch I'm speaking of is from Silver Beach to Oak Ridge, that's what I'm looking at right now.
The core tourist area.
Yeah.
So, yeah, see, I honestly would not be in favor of closing beaches if that's the situation, because, you know, I don't think you're going to find people that are, that are going to not come to Daytona Beach because the beach is closed, I think they would still come and just stay on the cool deck or something. I, I don't think it would have a public health benefit. It would, it would make a good headline, but I, I just don't see it accomplishing anything toward, you know, if that's the case, if, you know, what Quanita's seeing, you know, is that we're not seeing the, the, the place, you know, that, I'm not seeing people gather anywhere right now, literally. I mean, I, I think the orders that are in place, you know, have been effective. I don't know if we're having an issue with, you know, house parties and things like that, you know, but, you know, that, that's sort of, that's, that's another problem that, that is going to be very, very difficult to deal with. But, you know, we're, we're just in this situation where we have bad data, and we don't have enough time to, you know, since the, the restrictions have been put into place to, to judge whether or not they've been effective. You know, a lot of places are, are kind of a ghost town right now, a lot of shopping centers, a lot of retail places have closed, you know, I, I just, I'm not seeing people out. I, I think that, that the restrictions that are in place, you know, look like they're being effective to me. But, you know, we have 18 cases, and Volusia has at 11 o'clock this morning. I don't think the 6 o'clock update is out. But, no, it's not. You know, 18 out of 500,000, you know, you know, to me, I'm not seeing, you know, and th- those are numbers that are, that were before any restrictions, you know, or, or right, you know, it was right after Bike Week, you know, you, you start to, you know, show symptoms, you know, three, four, five days after you, you are exposed. So, people that attended Bike Week and were exposed would have started showing symptoms last week, you know, those results are starting to come back now. So, now the ones that were exposed the first weekend or the middle of the week, you know, those results, you know, were already bad. So, I'm not, you know, you know, I don't want to be cavalier about this, it's an extremely serious problem, and, you know, we, it disproportionately affects people with underlying health conditions and, and people that are, that are, you know, over 65. But, you know, I'm not sure that, I'm, I'm not willing to say that we should close the beaches or request the county. I mean, it's 6 to 1, but, in my opinion is, I don't think that that, I'm not confident that, that action would have an effect that would be demonstrable as we look at the curve.
Can I speak to that?
Okay, yes, yes ma'am.
Can I speak to that? So, for me, it's more about the, the effect of people driving, because you may not be able to fly here and then be quarantined, we can certainly drive here, right? So, for me, it's the effect of knowing that when you get here, if you're coming here because you think you're going to have more freedom, the beach and all this, no, actually prefer to stay where you are. Also, people coming from the south and heading north because there are more restrictions, right, if that should happen. When I went there a week ago, I was appalled at the contact that I saw there, and then as the week has gone by, it's decreased and decreased and decreased, but I still think that people might leave where they are to come here, and that is, that is the issue for me.
And I appreciate that, and that's a perfectly valid, you know, observation, you know, and, and possible conclusion. I mean, it, it, it very well may be something, and that, that is a very good point, that people may start coming up here, you know, because the beaches in Miami-Dade and Broward were closed a while ago. So, if they're looking for beaches, you're right, they might say, hey, let's try Daytona, you know, and, and the people that are going to be cabin fever over in Orlando or whatnot may say, let's go to Volusia because, you know, there's, you know, we're tired of being here. So, I, I, you know, I, I just don't have the, the information that I would need to take such a drastic, to agree to support such a drastic step, step, but I certainly, I'm, I'm kind of on the fence about the whole thing, so.
Commissioner May, were you, I'm sorry, were you driving on the beach?
No, I was, I was watching and walking and, and doing that, yeah.
And I, I've been over there a couple of times, and the first two, the two times that I went, I, I was appalled and, and what I saw also was just way too much contact and way too many people, and I realize that the numbers are inclined to be reduced, but it's more than that. For me, I don't want to wait until we get to the numbers of Broward and other places to begin to act. I think the time is now for action. And, and the beach is, is our greatest resource in Daytona Beach, but unfortunately, at this time, it is an attractive nuisance. You know, it, it attracts people to have a confidence that we don't want them to have. And while people may not be in malls and they may not be shopping as much, you know, I am receiving a vast number of reports of people gathering in places that they should not, you know, people doing things that they should not be doing, coaching and teaching and having their players to, to work out, you know. There's no way that anyone should be practicing football. There's no way you should be practicing basketball, playing seven-on-seven. Receiving way too many reports of people and older people playing bingo in bingo halls. That, to me, should not happen. No one should play bingo in, in town, if they, especially if they're not six feet apart, but they're not practicing by being six feet apart. And they're, those are obviously the most vulnerable people among us. Community pools in neighborhoods such as, you know, where you have a community pool in a subdivision, they're full. We cannot have that. You know, and so I'm, you know, those are the things that are low-hanging fruit as it relates to flattening the curve, because the other things, as it relates to the economy, we have to try to do those things, but these are things that are just the recreation, the things that we do have to say that we're not going to be supportive of as a community.
Could you go over those restrictions again, sir, with regard to the gatherings, that people are clear, the number is 10 or under, correct, if you're going to do any activities? And I, I thought last week, or two weeks...
Six feet apart.
Six, that's fine, so 10 people six feet apart, those are permissible, but we also discussed, and I thought I heard you say something about mentoring programs for young people during this time, did I hear you say anything about that?
All of those are...
Suspended, totally suspended. Okay.
And, you know, spring break is, is not just one or two weeks, it just began. Spring break is like six to eight weeks, so there's another wave of people still coming.
Last week, last week was the biggest spring break, they're gone, it's pretty much obvious that it's not.
Oh, okay.
Last week was the biggest week, that's why we have a little...
Okay. But we have to remember that college people are still not in school. You know, they're not in school, and they're not working. But, okay, we, we have six people. I don't, what, what would the resolution, it's just a simple resolution from our perspective...
I would say, if you'll make a motion and it's approved, I'll be glad to draft a resolution in support of closing the public beach access within Daytona Beach, recommend that the, the Volusia County...
Okay.
Yeah, I would...
Commissioner?
I, I guess I would, yeah, I would, this is time, make a motion that we draft a policy declaration to the county and to the, to whom, you know, to the other, to this governor, I guess, to urging both of them, both to take any and all steps necessary to halt the spread of the coronavirus, the COVID-19, and to take, you know, whatever actions are necessary to prevent people from congregating or whatever might cause the spread of the disease or put at-risk populations, and, and we specifically at Volusia County urge them to close the beaches to prevent people from congregating there, and any and other, you know, any and other actions they deem necessary, you know, something like that, not just, you know, specifically name the beach, but also just to, you know, take dra- act drastic actions now, rather than taking a wait-and-see approach before we end up, you know. But note, like Commissioner Gilliland said, that, that the test, I mean, people are just now getting test results back from a week ago, so we're going to see a huge spike in a couple of weeks, that doesn't mean there's new cases, it just means there's newly reported or documented cases, but I don't want to get to the point where, you know, we're at, you know, millions of infected people in the United States.
Second?
All right. Any other direction needed?
Uh, yes, that's enough direction, and I'll draft such a resolution, resolution for your signature.
Okay.
Do I, do I need to ask about...
We'll need to take public comment, of course.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have anyone willing to, or desiring to comment publicly?
Percy, that's you.
Yeah, Cynthia's not here. All right, all right, a motion and a second, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-1. Okay. What about, okay, Commissioner Delgado, do you have any other comments?
No, sir.
Nope, okay, thank you very much. Commissioner May?
So, I've been going back and forth with myself, because, you know, I, like you, Rob, I, I'm a business person, city commissioner, and I'm into health and wellness, so I'm in a unique position to kind of look at the intersection of those points. You know, I, I went back and forth with regard to how Commissioner Delgado feels about the fullest extent of what we could do, and I called the city manager, I've been in contact with the hospital daily. The place that I'm at right now is safety of citizens, but at the same time, we have to make sure that we do not completely shut down the economy at one time. So, if we already recognize that it's going to be $4 million to help with the water bill, now we're looking at May, June, July, August, potentially, that $100 is only going to go so far, right? So, people are shut down early, I applaud them for their prudence, but at the same time, those people are now going to be out of work for longer periods of time, so I just want us to keep an eye on that for as much as we possibly can, because we have to get to the other side of this also. I've been in contact with the local business community, and they're concerned not just for their business, but for the health of their employees and for the contact that they may have, and so I appreciate all of their concern. We all share that. It's not just business for us, it's these are people who we know and care about and people who we see on a daily basis. So, the business community supports our efforts, but I want us to also help them as much as we possibly can. I'm in contact with Housing Authority, we do know that they have my heart, and so last week, I gave all of my Bike Week funds to them, 4,000 and 2,000. My request is, could we please disperse those funds early versus waiting for months? I'm not sure what the process is, but as of right now, I believe there is a need. The way the need exists is that I have seniors at Windsor and Maylee, and they may be at risk, they live in a small community, and they would not be able to leave their apartments to go and get groceries. So, that would be up to organizations, Council on Aging, whomever...
Let's go ahead and make a motion to approve that, so that we can do it now.
So, can I make a motion that I am allowed to, so we're allowed to disperse the Bike Week funds earlier, as soon as possible, to Housing Authority?
Just make a motion, all that you want.
6,000, okay, super, all of it, but I would like very much for 2,000 of it to go toward the seniors at Windsor, Maylee, which I said last week, and then 4,000 to the rest of the community.
If she said last week, she'd be ready this week.
She, I did say that.
She said it, but we didn't take a motion, we had to vote on it.
I thought it was already in process.
She just said it, it wasn't a motion.
Okay, so now we're doing a motion, so 2,000 of the six goes specifically toward Windsor, Maylee, and the remainder of the 4,000 balance goes to Housing Authority to be used as they see fit for the money that they need.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, no public comment, no comment, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye. Those opposed, same side. Are you there, Commissioner?
He said a weak aye.
Weak aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, motion carries 7-0, so that's, that's done, it's not executed.
Fantastic, thank you so much, as quickly as possible would be great, and again, their need is that already they're recognizing, should they run into trouble, that they don't have a way of actually getting food to the seniors. So, I've been in contact with Council on Aging a little bit to find out how they're managing their food delivery systems, or if there's some way that we can help in that particular situation, because they're limiting their movements also because they are elders, right? So, business community, residential community, small groups, seniors. I would like to know, I know we get our updates, but is there any other information that I can get? I know I'm getting the same updates you are, I think, but then I'm making my own calls to the hospital as well. What is the most information we can get? Where are we drawing our information from for our actual numbers? Where are we getting that from, in terms of people who are ill or being admitted? Where is that coming from?
It's all coming from the Department of Health.
That's all it all comes from.
Yes, I'm suggesting business, the Department of Health, they have a daily situation report that's...
Which we get.
And also additionally, they have a more thorough report, which was...
By state, or by city, the number of occurrences, how many tests are being done by lab, and all the... and all the accurate statistical information that's available right now.
Okay, and then-
In addition, the managers and the, with the, Jim, what's Jim's name?
With Jim Judge, with Volusia County Emergency Management.
So every Monday, Wednesday and Friday, we have a call and we all talk about what the status is of projects that are involved with, as it relates to this.
And then I also, I took some time and I called to the other cities, the other, spoke to some commissioners we know, and I asked them how they were doing. And I feel that even as commissioners, that we can call and find out, what are you doing? How are your projects moving? What are you doing as a safety measure? And so that is my effort to kind of stay in touch with people. But for me, it's been a lot of calling around and then speaking to the regular, just everyday person. I will tell you a concern, a concern that puts me in two different directions. So when we have people who are at risk, it's not just that, it's not just the elderly population. It's let's say you have a doctor who is an oncologist and they're seeing a group of patients. Sometimes those patients won't be able to, won't feel safe enough to go and get their extra treatments. Those are the issues that we're having. It's all those little unintended consequences of delaying that I'm being faced with as I speak to different people. And I'm being, again, I want to move, but I also want to be sure that we're protecting our citizens first and then also looking at the economic impact in the long run and then how we can help that as best we can for the business community. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilligan?
So Jim, in the, in the update, it said that, you know, this plan authorizes eighty hours of administrative leave for all city employees, including part-time, seasonal and on a pro-rated basis. But administrative leave is paid leave.
Paid, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Delgado brought that up earlier that, I want to make sure we were all the same page that administrative is paid leave.
That's in addition to what they've already earned as leave.
Right, okay. The, Mr. Mayor, your thing about community pools, I think that actually is something that, you know, I haven't been around a community pool, so I haven't seen the congregating, you know, individuals there, but I think that actually is something that we, you know, I don't know if we want to try and, I don't know how we communicate that, but certainly I think it's something that the governor should seriously consider about, you know, placing a restriction on. Because it does sound like, particularly in our community, it's a problem. Commissioner Henry, I think you said you've seen it as well. So, I mean, that is, you know, you know, I'm trying to figure out where these places are people might be congregating because that, that's the problem. You know, I don't think we need to go-
To apartment complexes.
Apartment complexes, neighborhood pools. Obviously, our pool, Cyber Street's closed. Actually, both our pools are closed.
We're closed.
We're closed.
So, you know, but I do think that, you bring up a good point, both of you, that that's something that needs to be, perhaps got overlooked or hasn't got enough attention, but, you know, it's only going to get hotter from here on out. So I think that's something that somehow we need to pass along, a, you know, that we would be in favor of the governor taking an action on that.
Do we have to wait for the governor to take action on that, Bob, in our city?
We could potentially include it in the resolution we've discussed, Commissioner Delgado wanted that language to be broad. Frankly, I don't think we need to readdress it, I can just put it in there with your consensus and add that, you know, the governor or Volusia County, you know, necessary action to prevent large gatherings, including, and we all already talked about closing the beach and all that in there prohibiting.
Wait a minute, can we prohibit the people going to the pools in our city?
Well, certainly you could do that.
Why wouldn't we just do that if that's what we want to do?
You can do that as part of your authority, Mayor, as emergency measure.
Okay, is that something you all want?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we will include that.
Okay, I will draft a separate emergency measure as part of the-
Okay, well, what about bingo halls?
Again, Mayor, you have all the authority.
Okay, but I'm going to speak with you all.
Just the one, right?
See, I thought you-
Yeah, go ahead.
Sir, I support you, every, every specific example you mentioned, I support you in taking action either in your capacity as mayor or in drafting a recommendation to whoever we need to, to shut that down. I don't think the sports practices are appropriate. I don't think, you know, the bingo halls, I mean, I don't know if you want to phrase it as just, you know, any, any group of people, you know, more than just basically like groups of people where the risk of infection is high. I mean, whatever, however you want to phrase it, but all the specific examples you provided, I would have no problem with you curtailing by whatever means necessary. You know, I just don't think there's any reason for people to be congregating in public right now.
What about churches? I don't know if any churches are doing in-person service.
I don't think people should go to church, but I don't, I would not, I don't want to go that far.
Isn't there already-
I don't think they should go to church.
Our one hotspot is a church over in, in-
Where was it? No, it was-
Two of the ladies that were on that Nile cruise went to that church and that's where we're starting to see cases.
But I-
Our church, our church went, you know, by-
Online?
Most of the churches are already, they're all broadcasted.
Online.
Online.
I don't know, but, I mean, we have so many churches in Daytona Beach.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if anybody out there is actually still conducting in-person service.
But does the, does the executive order not trump that from the governor saying that we are not allowed to congregate in larger groups?
Well, you can have church service and you have ten people, twenty people in here and they would be, you know, six feet apart. So, you know, you could conceivably do that. Let's focus on the things that we want to focus on, and I do have some things that are, you know, that are public. The dog track, I think they should be closed. Are, are they closed? When are they closed?
The dog track closed on Friday at four P.M.
And they're not opening up, okay, good.
Indefinitely, yes.
Indefinitely. So we got community pools. What else?
Sports practice.
Sports practices should be included in our own community resolution, so we're banning those and- Church feeding, bingo.
So since the beaches right now are still open, correct, until the county does something, could we foresee, as a curiosity, people, since these venues are now closed, heading back to the beach? Because it would be open until the county does its thing? Okay?
Yeah, the beaches are up to, is up to the county. Can you all think of anything else? We don't, I mean, okay. All right, Commissioner, did you have anything else?
Uh, she got that, that, um, oh, since everybody's spending so much time at home, this is a great time to fill out your census paperwork.
Absolutely.
I got that in the mail this week.
I started.
Let's everybody remember that if you don't get counted, we don't get money for you living in our city. So we undercount by a lot every census, every ten years. And it, it doesn't go in some big secret database and people know who you are. What you're doing is you're preventing us from being able to provide the services to you that you want. We need to make sure everybody gets counted.
We undercounted by, I think, thirty percent last time or more and we led the county in being undercounted. That's not a statistic that we want to lead the county in.
Yes.
Okay, great point. Commissioner Henry?
So I read this morning that the first case of coronavirus for police officers and it got me thinking about our first responders. So I'd like for the chief and both chiefs to come up and tell me, what precautions are we taking to keep our officers safe? What, what, what things are you telling your officers? What's going on out there that we need to know? Do you have everything you need to ensure that the officers, ensure the officers' safety? Just give me a quick rundown of what's going on with our officers and fire first responders.
So beginning early on, we took certain initiatives from hand sanitizers and improved protocols and personal protective equipment. Yes, personal protective equipment is at a premium. We found recently various community companies that have stepped up and made alternative, a, alternative face masks available. There are alternative gowns such as ponchos that we're utilizing. As far as the fire service is concerned, we've placed orders with the State Resource Center. We got an initial allotment yesterday. All resources are coming from the national stockpile to the Orlando Distribution Center and then they're being staged at the Ocean Center for deployment to hospitals and all first responders. I think Commissioner Delgado mentioned something to the effect of workers' compensation or what are we doing for our employees? I know that there's several discussion from almost every public safety association to talk with Florida about making it approved workplace occupational illness, though we have not seen official documentation of that yet. The city continues to afford the effort of not only the paid administrative leave time, but the personal leave time. And then eventually, I believe after April second, we'll have the new guidance on how we need to code people's time. As far as, we continue between myself and Chief Capri, we continue to stress distancing amongst our personnel. We've limited the number of people and the comings and goings at both our stations and our facilities. Continued guidance goes out because we receive updated CDC guidance specific to not only healthcare providers. I understand there's law enforcement guidance also. All measures that we could reasonably take right now, I believe the manager has really hit home to direct us to maintain the survivability of our personnel. For a marathon event, we can't go through all of our resources, whether it be a product or our personnel, in the current future. We have to be able to extend for this marathon event that we may face. Chief Capri?
Correct, Capri, excuse me, police chief. We are prepared, when this virus first came out, a couple of weeks ago when we really started seeing it, we started putting extra stations in for hand sanitizing, looking at our supplies that we've had. One thing is, police officers and law enforcement, we're always out there in the public and sometimes we have to touch some things we don't like to touch, but we have to. And we've probably been exposed to so many things, God, I don't, I couldn't even tell you. So we're in that natural instinct of automatically using hand sanitizer, washing our hands, wearing gloves. With that being said, also working for the city of Daytona Beach, we have a lot of events here and natural disasters, so we're always in that operational mode, there's really never no downtime. So with that being said, putting it all together, we're very prepared. The one issue we did have was that masks, we couldn't find masks. I'm proud to say today, Deputy Chief and Captain Williams were able to get ahold of a local company here in Ormond Beach and we got three hundred of them coming Saturday. We have, we have other masks that are on backorder that'll be here probably by mid-April. So between those two things with the masks, we're going to be fine. We're good on gloves, we backorder, we have some more coming in and also hand sanitizer is another thing we're working with. The Copper Bottom Brewery on Mason Avenue, it's actually in Holly Hill, they, they gave us a couple gallons of, they're not making liquor anymore, they're making hand sanitizer.
Right.
So that's helping out tremendously, so we have gallons of that that we just got to get some bottles for and get it out. PPE equipment, we're waiting for the state of Florida, like Drew said. A lot of that stuff's going to areas that are really affected that need it before we get it. But we're improvising and we're, one thing we did operationally was, we've, we staffed up our front desk with extra people, even at our precincts, the two precincts, the one on the beach side and the one on Orange Avenue, and we're directing non-priority calls to the precincts. So we're not responding to, let's say, you had a break into your shed and got some stuff stolen. We recommend you call in, we could do it over the phone, but if you want, come down to the police station, we'll take the report down there instead of sending officers to those situations. So we're trying to triage calls, just going to like the high priority calls, in-progress calls where we have to respond, domestic violence calls and whatnot. And then we're stressing the distancing, social distancing and constantly wiping things down. The station's getting wiped down two times a day, from top to bottom. And everybody's taking it serious, everybody's taking it serious. So I'm very proud of that because, you know, we see so much different stuff every year with SARS or MRSA and we're kind of exposed to it as first responders. So we always have that extra, you know, apprehension of what we're doing and making sure we have gloves and being officer safety is always stressed and that's an advantage for us. But we're ready and we have plans and protocols in place, God forbid if somebody gets exposed, how we're going to deal with that. I hope it doesn't happen, but we're doing everything we can to prevent that.
Can I ask a question, sir?
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You're out in the community, how do you think the business community is managing their safety protocols and their efforts and are they?
I think everybody's taking it serious. We're getting, just like, last week I think we had like ninety percent compliance. And that went to, after we explained to them what was going on, we're right about at a hundred percent compliance. They're taking it serious, they're doing the takeout, they're following the protocols. The stores, there's no really problems at the stores as far as the grocery stores and Target and Walmart. There is some hoarding going on, but that's going to be the responsibility of those stores to manage that. I do see signs in a lot of the stores that I've been checking where limit yourself to one thing of toilet paper or, or you can't find Lysol, that seems to be the one thing they can't find. But right now, everybody's taking it serious for now.
I will tell you, in the evening times, I'll take a drive around Zone Three.
Yeah.
And I noticed that there's a reduced traffic.
Yes.
Even toward the end of Bike Week on Saturday and Sunday, stoplights and ISB, reduced traffic. And so in the evening times, I noticed a complete shutdown almost at about seven o'clock or so. And it seems like it's happening naturally, people are gravitating toward home, it feels like-
I, I have to agree with you that even yesterday and even today, at a certain time, it feels like it's a Sunday when you're riding around the town. We've put extra officers on at night to prevent burglaries, to prevent people trying to take advantage of people and the businesses and the homeowners in the neighborhood. So we've got more than enough police officers out there. And crime has been dropping even before that, it's actually dropping. We're down twenty-two percent from last year in crime in the city of Daytona Beach. And that was as of about ten days ago. The new report should be out this week and we keep dropping. So now we're really just in a crisis mode to, number one, protect the citizens of this city and make sure the city's safe, which I totally believe, wholeheartedly and confident that it is, and protect our employees. And the most important thing is making sure that their families were okay. And that's one of the first things we did, so as long as their families are okay and taken care of, they can come to work and focus on what they need to do, so.
I went to Pep Boys, which is a garage situation, right? You go in, guys, hey, you can find that line there.
Everywhere you go.
They have gloves on, you know, and, and they all have, you know, all the mechanics have gloves. Usually you go to a garage and they all got grease on their hands, grease all over them, but it's a different day and I think people are taking it seriously.
And so I think it's important for us to stress how the business community is responding in an appropriate fashion, that they're still conducting business, they have, at the cash registers, they have tables in front. And if you're going there and they're actually practicing procedures with credit cards and whatnot, they're handing you change in a totally different way. So the business community is still doing its thing, they're just doing it in a new way right now. It's a lot safer for us, yeah.
And we have to thank you all, the commission and the city manager, you guys have been great as far as this thing with the water bills. I don't think a lot of cities are doing that. Daytona Beach always, and it's the right thing to do, always takes care of their citizens and always does the right thing and takes care of their employees. So when you look at that, maybe some of these other cities will jump on board and follow. But we're always a way ahead of everybody else and people look to us for the answers and follow us, what we're doing. And I hope they do, I hope they steal everything we got and take it back to their cities and make them as safe as they are and take care of their citizens. But, and taking care of the employees. Trust me, by these employees are, what was done with this A.D. time, that's all I've been hearing about, of how, you know, it shows the city cares about them and that's important to them, so, thank you.
Actually, if I add on what Monique was saying, Public Service actually is doing a thing where they were opening up an hour early for only people sixteen by the middle. I thought that was a great idea.
Walmart did that today as well.
Yeah.
Was it around the corner?
Yeah.
Well, maybe it was a terrible one.
I would just like them to practice social, I don't want to call it social distancing because that has a huge emotional trigger there.
Physical distancing is what we're going to-
We're calling it physical distancing. I would like for them, even though they are seniors in a protected environment and they're going at a certain time, which I would like to see more businesses going to that format if possible, or even people have a health risk. But still practice physical distancing even when you're in that environment.
Everywhere you go.
They're in the line, you were actually stashed out.
Okay, and when they were in the store, there was some pictures out, same thing, still be aware, just be self-aware because we can get through this, yeah?
Commissioner Henry?
Yes, the next thing I want to talk about is, just looking for it on the federal level, if the stimulus package, if we can ever get a stimulus package. I think this is going to be a great opportunity for us to jump ahead with loans for small businesses that were affected on MLK. I think it's kind of a way that we can kill two birds with one stone. We know that they didn't get the proper treatment that they got, that they needed when we decided to go and renovate MLK and that they're going to need additional economic support. Well, with the stimulus packages, the small business loans come through, I think that the city as just a goodwill should make sure that there's someone available to guide them and lead them through the process of getting those small business loans because they're going to be a- they're gonna be affected economically also by their businesses being shut down now. So, I think that that is a great way to take care of those businesses on MLK. They need us.
You can complete that paperwork now, you can't upload it because the bill hasn't passed, but they do have to take work together, so...
Maybe that's why the person couldn't, I received a call and I passed it on to someone else to help the person, but maybe that was the problem that they were having, they couldn't get the information or do what they were trying to do and that.
She's looking at...
Well, maybe...
Maybe you could send that to Bob, and I don't, I don't...
And maybe if we could get that information to them now, and they'll know, and they can start...
I just didn't want him to send it to me.
I was just looking at the news to see whether or not, because that'll be the top story once they do come to, they just, you know, this has gotten ridiculous, but the fighting that's going on, you know, everybody who's affiliated with the political party discussion should be in Paris right now, because both...
They need to get it done, just get it done.
It's interesting, because it's not about the money, it's about their own personal livelihood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agree. And so, that's something that I think that we could designate someone to do, to make sure that we go out and let them know, hey, loans are gonna be possibly, possibly be available, and kind of lead the, lead the track on that. And also, going forward, looking at, you know, I know on the federal level, the president says that he's looking to open the country and back up sooner than later, and I'm kind of curious to see what that looks like for us. I don't want us to be too hasty, but at the same time, I want us to make sure that we're not leading our people into a burning houses, a burning house as well, making sure that we kind of take a middle ground to make sure that there's balance, not going too fast, but not going too slow at the same time. So, I'm kind of curious to see what that looks like for us as a city, maybe not jumping back out there too fast, but also making sure that the timing is good for everyone. And the last thing is that I just wanna say to the people, sanitation workers, someone sent a message saying that, that all the police officers and firefighters were getting a lot of love, and we're telling them thank you, but nobody is giving them any love picking up our COVID-19 garbage, so... I told them that I was going to be sure tonight to tell them that that is a very important part of our community, just trying to imagine people being home all day, so you're accumulating so much more trash than your garbage and trash than you're used to accumulating. People are doing more yard work now because they have to be home, the kids are home, so, you know, I can imagine that it's gotten a lot tougher for them. So, I do wanna say thank you to everyone, sanitation workers who are helping in the fight in the city of Daytona Beach, we really appreciate you. And I was glad to hear also that our employees are gonna be taken care of in the event that something happens, unfortunately. I was really concerned about that, and I had gotten some calls, and that concerned me, so I'm glad to hear that that's being worked out and going forward, we don't have to worry about whether or not, as a city, the first people we should be taking care of is these people that are on the front line, because if we don't have frontline people, we're screwed. None of us can get out there and do the job that they're doing, we're not trained to do it, we don't have the range to do it, I don't have the range to do it. So, I just wanna make sure, and I just wanna say that I'm thankful that we are putting measures in to make sure that they are protected and in place for that.
Mr. Mayor, let me just follow up with that, because I think, I mean, I've been here 16 years, and we've seen a lot of those kind of things happen, and I can't think of an instance, I think everybody out here will testify to, I can't think of an instance where something happened to an employee or his family where the city didn't step up and help, period. I know we had employees, if you recall, we had an explosion, and two people got really hurt, one died. We paid their salary right on until they were, the one was out of the hospital, even though we weren't required to, and they were getting workman's benefits, but we paid their salary right on. We had someone else who had a child with difficulties, we paid for that, that whole, the operation and everything, in addition to what they were, what was the insurance that's paid. So, I can't think of a time when this team hasn't really been, been, you know, in support of taking care of the people that really make us successful, and as the people that work for us.
Mr. Mayor, the 6 o'clock update did come out, and it's 1467 statewide, we picked up one more in Volusia, but that's only an increase of about 40 since 11:00 this morning, which is hopefully a sign of...
That's a good sign.
Things to come.
You know, especially if we start increasing our testing, which we have.
It increased by how many, sorry, one?
It's 1467, it was 1422, I think, this morning.
Okay.
It went up between 11:00, or sorry, 6:00 yesterday and 11:00 this morning, it went up by 150.
And one more in Volusia, is that what you said?
And in Volusia, we're up to, we have 19.
So, one, that's what I...
One more, and we need to expect that to go.
Yeah.
If we could stay under 100 in Volusia, I would be, I'd try to do a car, in the hospital, but I would try.
I would too.
I'd visit you.
Commissioner Henry anymore?
Last thing was just looking at the governor talking about...
Sorry, mic's not on. Looking at the governor talking about quarantining people coming in from those hotspots like New York, just keeping in mind that his quarantine is for people that are flying in, it really isn't for people who will be driving in because they'll be staying for long periods of time. So, that's something that I think we should be mindful of and keep an eye of, because they're not just all gonna go down to Miami and, because they know Miami-Fort Lauderdale are hotspots. So, we gotta keep an eye out on the people that are driving in as well. And I think that's all my comments for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed?
You all are some talkative folks tonight, don't ever talk about how long I talk. Wait, good gosh.
I just think you happened to be last.
Well, several of the things I would have addressed have been addressed before, I don't have to talk about them. I do have a point of clarification, though. When Chief Driscoll was talking, I was following your reading.
The numbers.
I think there was...
The numbers.
Yeah, the numbers. You said 180, according to the record, for the record, it says 160 days on the permits will be issued.
It would be as the resolution states, so I apologize if I misspoke.
Okay. And then I just wanted to also say that I am so proud of this city. Several of the things we did today, I had already spoken to the manager about, and several of us got emails of employees being concerned about their time and what have you, and I think that we're doing everything that we should do, I think we need to stay on top of this, because if our governing rules need to be more stringent, I think we need to be prepared to do that as well. I'm proud of the resolution we're sending to the governor and to the county in regards to our beaches, because we have seen them before, and again, it just might be another wave, although Chief says that the wave should be over. And in regards to our chief of police, I did have a governing concern in regards to the report on the additional weapons that are being purchased by people. I don't know if they think it's the end of the world or what, but there's been a report that more weapons have been purchased by folks, and ammunition, as if they think they might have to, you know...
Well, we did a PSA today, too.
Okay.
Without saying, lock your guns, lock security weapons, leave them in cars, especially all over your house, if you're at home now, you got a lot of time to work these little things, focus more, especially securing your firearms.
Yes.
People probably scared, and they don't have to be, but we're ready, we're ready.
Okay.
I think it's serious, leave them in cars, unlock, and put a PSA out today.
Very good. I had another thought, but it slipped my mind. I think we're doing everything that we're supposed to be doing as a city. I also wanna thank our frontline for all that they do, and the garbage workers too, because yes, that would be a whole nother issue if they didn't pick up the garbage. We'd have Corona VD-19 and something else as well. So, we just wanna thank everyone, and all the staff that's continuing to keep our doors open and make things work, and I think it's phenomenal what we're doing with the water bill. As you know, I was very concerned about that from the onset, and I just think we're doing what we're supposed to be doing as a city, and I think we can say that I'm back to that theme, I love my city, I don't know why I don't see it yet, but I think we're doing enough to prove that we do, and I think our citizens would be proud of what we're instrumenting. Okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
You know, Mr. Mayor, one, let's not forget, let's not overlook our folks that work at the sewage treatment...
I was thinking...
Oh, yeah.
Because, yeah, the coughing and sneezing and other things is actually how this is transmitted, so we need to make sure that they got the right kind of protective equipment as well.
Okay. Well, I agree, I had that on my list, to thank them.
And Orange County just issued a stay-at-home order beginning Thursday at 11:00 for 14 days.
Who did?
Orange County, including Orlando.
Including...
Including Orlando.
There's a quote I didn't hear from Buddy Dyer, so I assume that means they're in.
And that's what I mean about getting stronger, I'm not opposed to that if that's something that we have to do.
And so, for me, I look at it in terms of, now, they are effectively being stay-at-home in Orlando, where do they go next if they don't want to stay there? Someplace that's open, doing its thing. So, east.
They left, they left, so many things are left open, they take dry cleaners, there's all kinds of stuff that are left open, so it's, these stay-at-home orders are not like you're actually quarantining, they're...
And I don't think that's really the objective, is to quarantine people, but it is to send a message that you need to be home. If you have to do something that you have to do, do it, but those things that you don't have to do, don't do them, just stay home. I forgot one thing, these places that are called hotspots, you know what a hotspot is? Is the internet gambling?
Yeah.
That are illegal.
Okay, I would like that to be added, we do not need those open.
Derby Shire is one of them.
Derby Shire is one on Mason, I think it is, I think it's in our city.
People are still getting together in these huge groups despite what's going on?
I'll tell you where it is.
Orange Avenue.
You shut it down as soon as they open, so I don't...
Yeah, but I think it's, they got a place that's open over there, that's what I've been told. I don't, we're not supposed to even have them?
No, they're illegal.
Well, they'd like to open up, I know some people who go to it. So, I saw, I got a report that you need to stop this person from going to the hotspot and shut that hotspot down, and I said, we're not supposed to have them, but check on it, it's one on Mason. But, I guess even if you wrote that in the ordinance, in the resolution, it wouldn't matter, I guess it doesn't matter, it's not legal.
We cut it down a long time ago, and I give them anything back.
Okay. We have accomplished a great deal here tonight, and unfortunately, I don't think that we have done all that we will have to do in the coming days or weeks, but I am proud of you all, proud of our city manager and staff for what we have done, our city attorney, who works quickly to turn these resolutions around and rewrites them more times than you guys can imagine, but I'm proud of the work that we've done. But, this is not the time for any of us to rest in how we feel about what we've done. So, what we have to all do, and I wanna encourage everyone, let's be, let's try to be great communicators. And what I mean by that is, let's try to get the word out of what we need our citizens to do, and not only what we need them to do, also what we are doing, because Commissioner Delgado has talked about the fact that so many of his constituents are not on the internet, they don't have access to information in the ways that most of us may access our information. Let's find ways to do whatever it takes. If you have senior citizens that you know, call them. You know, I took it upon myself this week to call at least 50 senior citizens. I didn't make it to 50, I made it to 44, I think, but my goal each week is to call 50 people, and to tell them what's going on or to encourage them. But, we can call them and then give them the information and ask them to call their friends, so you get that old phone tree going. But, whatever we have to do to get the information out there, let's all participate in doing that, and let's recognize that, yes, people are hurting. You know, I put out a lot of information, and a lot of times I get questions from people. What's in it for folks like me, who may not be the beneficiaries as the Housing Authority did? They did a great thing by, you know, they're reducing the rents for people who lost their jobs. That's phenomenal. Well, I get a response, what's what about folks like me who may not receive rent assistance? So, we have to let them know as soon as the federal government does what we all know they're gonna do, let's, see it as a part of our responsibility to communicate all of those different messages to our constituents, because that's, those are the things that they kind of rely on us for. So, Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Just to kind of follow up on some of the discussions about do more things, do a better job in communicating, and we do a pretty good job as it is, but we are looking at how we can expand our reach with TV. We already are on the radio on one radio station, and we're gonna look at other radio stations to be programming-wise, so we can reach that part of the community, and then we have a newsletter we put out, but I'm not sure how frequently we're putting it out. But, with all that said, I will get you information about the number of contacts we get on all the things we're doing, so that you can see what the result is of the things we're doing currently, and, but we're gonna expand what we're doing now.
Okay. Now, and that bridge closed, we're not having bridge, right, in the city?
Nope, no bridge.
No bridge, and that, okay, because I remember you said we shouldn't be having bridges anyway.
It's the city facility we closed.
But, it's closed, okay. You have anything?
Mayor, I would like to thank my staff, they've really stepped up in this time of emergency, they've been totally abreast of all of the executive orders coming out of the governor's office, and then reviewing what other cities have been doing throughout the state and the country, so that we can be ready for preparing for executive directives.
Mr. Mayor, his staff and my staff, and Ben, Ben has been really a big help, Bob, with all the things we've all been running around trying to get done, you know, Jim Morris and, you know, Drew is, obviously, has been a big, big piece of what we're doing, so we've got a lot of people here that are just really breaking it, just to make sure we get the right message out to the community.
One last thing, I think I forgot also, what about our farmer's market? I've received requests for them to be able to stay open. That's something that I actually concur with, because it's outside, but I don't know, I mean, it's like a grocery store, do you all...
We need fresh fruit.
Yeah, so I don't...
I think we just, we just need to encourage them to keep distances between individuals, but beyond that, I don't see why they can't be there.
Should we limit it to food only?
Food only?
Yeah.
That's all they sell.
They have a little bit of everything.
Little bit of everything.
Well, the problem is...
Mostly, it's mostly food.
It is.
The transmission of, you know, somebody picking something up and putting it back down, and the next person walking up and picking it up, and all of a sudden, they've got it on their hand, you know?
It's the same in the grocery store.
It's the same in the grocery store, which is why I'm saying, if we're saying food's okay, the other, you know, goods that are sold there, you know, it should be limited to type of things that are sold in grocery stores, we wanna keep it open, in my opinion.
Well, most everything they sell is that, I don't, I mean, it's either edible or it's the same thing that you find in a grocery store, like I needed some aloe when I was in the grocery store, or, you know, so the, most things they sell, I don't, yeah. I just, you know, they contacted me, and I was in agreement that it is an outdoor, basically, place where people can buy things, they said they've been shut down.
They have, but I think it's more than enough space out there that they can spread out further, you know, to not be so close, it'd take them to be like back-to-back, right?
Yeah. Back-to-back. They could distance it.
Yeah, they're pretty, they're, they're pretty spread out.
They got good space.
I go over there, you know, and, you know, buy fresh fruit, fresh vegetables from, and they kind of got little areas where different ones got their products out.
So, I just wanna clear something up real quick, because I have a feeling this may come up as it relates to the decision we're making with the farmer's market. So, somebody could say, well, you're okay with the farmer's market but not okay with So, somebody could say, "Well, you're okay with the farmer's market, but not okay with the beaches," because you could spread out there too, okay? My issue with the beach, so I just wanna put myself out there, is that it's an attractor for people to come from other cities here at this particular moment. That is my opposition to it. Do I think that it's a space you can spread out and not touch anybody, 'cause there's lots of room? 100%. But, because it is so attractive and it is such a nice beach, it's also going to invite more people here who are kind of, you know, more sheltered somewhere else. That is, that is the reason why.
Yeah. Yeah, I refer to it as an attractive nuisance at the moment, and that's what I think of it. It's a, it's a great place, but, yeah. And the farmer's market...
And it's very healthy and it's good for you, but it's also bringing other people.
Yeah. So, how do we do that? We just take that out or include the farmer's market, 'cause they...
It's not in anything right now. We'll, I'll send something to authorize that you can stay.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, anything else, Bob?
No, sir.
Nothing else, okay. Daytona Beach, city staff, colleagues, stay safe, this too shall pass. Good night.